In the subsequent public health emergency declared by Governor Edward Edwards, the mayor and board of members make use to attend public meetings by unbelievable electronic means. I am doing this virtually by phone. I am, yes, I did test positive for COVID. My household is basically tested positive for COVID and we are continuing to quarantine at home. We are doing okay. It's a, it is a strange virus, I will tell you. It's a different day every day, but I will talk more about that later. However, let's get started. First thing we do, we have Roque Hall from her clerk.
Town of Badaia, Board of Alderman Roque Hall for regular meeting of the mayor and Board of Aldermen dated September 8th, 2020. Alderman Betts, Alderman Betts is noted to be absent. Alderwoman Denby?
Present.
Alderman Gardner?
Here.
Alderman Probst?
Here.
Alderman Smith?
Here.
Mayor let the record show a quorum of the boards present and accounted for.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Before you have two sets of minutes, we will take each one in its individuality. So, the first one we will approve is the special meeting that we held on July 31st. If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Sound like Alderman Smith made that motion over here second?
I second the motion.
Second by Alderman Denby, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Second set of our minutes of our regular meeting on August 11th. Proceeding to any questions, I hear a motion to accept these minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Was that Alderman Smith?
Alderman Probst, motion made.
Alderman Probst?
Second.
Make motion over here second.
Second by Alderman Smith.
Okay, second by Alderman Smith, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. First item on our agenda is our financial statements for July 2020, Ms. Deborah Moecker, CTA. Oh, excuse me, I want to back up. I need to open up, have a motion to go into public comment for any, public comments on any of our agenda items. I'm sorry, I've got a little head. And anybody who does have a question on any of our agenda items, the best step to the microphone so everyone can hear. I appreciate that. So, can I hear a motion if we go into public meetings for public comments?
I make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Denby, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Was that Alderman Probst?
Alderman Smith.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Are we in public meeting? Are there any comments from the public? If no one's moving to the mic, can I hear a motion if we close the public comment section?
Make that motion, Alderman Probst.
Second motion.
Alderman Probst made the motion, do I hear a second?
Second, Denby.
Second by Alderman Denby, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank y'all so much for announcing yourselves, that helps a lot. Thank you so much. Item number one, our agenda is Ms. Deborah Moecker going to present her financial statements for July 2020.
Tonight's financial statements include the balance sheet as of July 31st, 2020, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the one month ending July 31st, a summary budget to actual comparison by fund, and a detailed budget to actual comparison by department. In summary, the town has combined cash in the bank of $5.9 million. This is, includes 3.1 million in the hydro fund, which is restricted, and also 1.8 million in the sales tax fund. Investments include 3.8 million, the hydro reserve fund has 2.3 million, and the general fund has 1.5 million in a CD. Total assets are 35.1 million, total liabilities are 5.3 million, for a fund balance of 29.8 million. The statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance for the one month ending July 31st indicates combined revenues of 3.25 million, total expenditures of 3.58 million, for a change in net position of a negative 331,391. The highlights of the financial statements for the one month ending July 31st include, we have purchased a service work order system, which will be divided among the utility departments, the street mechanic shop, and sanitation departments. It has not been implemented yet, but is expected to go into effect next week. This system will provide a means of tracking all service work in the town and provide historical data of work performed. The cost is a $12,000 annual cost, and it's not included in the budget, but it was something that we felt that was necessary, and our research found that this was the best buy for the cost, for the, anyway, total expenditures for the IT budget is off by 19,000. The budget for the IT department, total other services and supplies, is off by 19,000. It was not discovered until reviewing the July financials. This change will not affect the budget in a material way, but it is being brought to your attention. The overall change in net position is forecasted to be 1.82,000 instead of 1,100,000. Increase in sales tax collections for July is up. Sales tax collected for the month of July is up by 23% over the same time last year. The hydro royalty receivable is 5.1 million due August 1st. For the three months ending June 30th, 2020, the hydro royalty receivable is 5.1 million. This amount will be added to the accumulated cash on hand at the end of July and will exceed $8 million. The cash on hand will be used to pay the participation costs for three months and pay the utility department for a calculated portion used to help pay power costs. Over the last four years, the calculated excess revenues have totaled 5.3 million, of which 2.7 has been or will be available for rebate to the customer if the board approves the 1.28 million rebate tonight. The remaining amount, less a portion used to pay the note on the municipal complex in 2017, is 2.37 million that can be used for approved projects in the town. Money's borrowed to cover cost of substation construction. Through July 31st, 2020, 400,000 has been borrowed to cover materials, engineering costs, and legal fees incurred. The Aldermen are notified of the draws before they are made so as to be aware of where the money is being spent. All costs are recorded as capital assets on the balance sheet, and the long balance is included in the liability section. Construction of the city corp, construction at the city corp building, construction is ongoing, but the mold cleanup is finished, and the next steps are to determine what is necessary to keep the building from leaking. Approximately 24,000 has been spent of the 75,000 budgeted. Audio, video at the convention center. Work began today to replace the worn out system and upgrade the audio, video system. The budgeted cost is 66,000. The cost will be funded by the occupancy tax collected to benefit the convention center. Roadway improvements. At the end of July, roadway construction in the town is approximately 50% complete. The amount paid to date is 919,000. Year in audit. The year in audit has been scheduled, has not been scheduled yet, but my plans are to have the final trial balance to Sala Simmons by mid-September. This concludes my financial update.
Okay, does that completes your report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there any questions, Ms. Moe? Okay. We're going to move on to item number three on our agenda is occupational license application. The first one you have, it should be, we had to remove one, one had request removal. So, the next one on your list should be, it's going to be, their trade name is SC Squeaky Clean Service Corp., which is going to be a commercial cleaning supplies business. So, they are located on 33 Alabama Street, Badaia. Is there any questions on this, or have motion to accept this occupational license?
I make that motion, Alderman Gardner to approve.
Alderman Gardner made the motion, do I hear a second?
Second, Alderman Probst.
Alderman Probst made a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next one we have is Ms. Marilyn Williams Hunter is going to be putting in a mislue clavotomy LLC. That's in the old, it's in part of the, one of the new buildings up there that used to be the Pizza Hut, up where the new hair place is, and that's going to be in that same building. And what they will basically be doing is doing, you know, different type blood work, I understand, and so is there any questions on this?
I make the motion that we approve.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by?
Alderman Smith.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to item number three on our agenda, which is outdoor sign applications. First one we have, there are several signs. Dr. John X Fairbanks with Riverfront Urgent Care is making application for several signs. Some of those are on existing areas where a riverfront is advertised, and then also the new sign that would be a off-premise sign is on the back page that is on their property right before you go across the bridge on the right. They purchased that triangle square, that triangle there right before you cross the bridge, and they own that, and that would be the location of that sign. Are there any questions on this, or?
I make the motion, Alderman Probst we accept.
Okay. Motion made by Alderman Probst, accept, do I hear a second?
Rosa Denby, second.
Second by Ms. Denby, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Next, we have Ms. Marilyn Williams Hunter, which is going to be putting a sign up for her business. You'll look on the second page of your packet of her application, you'll see her sign, and she's making application for that, and it's my understanding this is going to be on the building, or is it going to be a freestanding?
Freestanding.
Okay. All right, do I hear a motion to accept this sign?
I make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, do I hear a second?
I second the motion, Rosa Denby.
Ms. Denby seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That completes our applications. Next, we have is a formality. We have board discussion vote to approve a resolution accepting all the bids for the transformer breaker additions of the substation project and awarding the project to Substation Enterprises, who was a little builder, a veteran amount of 582,000. And just for those people out there, we had bids go as high as 768,000, this one come in at 582, which is almost 200,000 cheaper, and they're asking that we accept, that we approve these bids. Any questions? Do I hear a motion to accept these bids?
Make that motion, Alderman Probst.
Alderman Probst made the motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second. Smith, Brent Smith.
Second by Alderman Smith, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The second part of this is item number five on our agenda is board discussion vote to approve a resolution accepting the bid for a control building additions of the substation project and awarding the project to Willmark Construction in the amount of 43,300. Do I hear a motion we accept this bid?
I make that motion to accept, Denby.
Ms. Moe, Ms. Denby made the motion to accept, do I hear a second?
Second, Alderman Probst.
Alderman Probst seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Item number six, it's official. Johnny Evans is there in the audience with us. It is official now, as of September the 7th, that affected that date, the public protection classification of the Town of Badaia has changed from a class three to class two. And all the properties rated commercial properties listed below, located inside the corporate limits of the Town of Badaia, within the required distance from a recognized fire station and a standard fire hydrant, if required, will receive class two rates. Effective September 7th, 2020, this change is applicable to all force policies and endorsements there too. Johnny, good job. I'd like for you to stand up and just talk a little bit, tell the people about the work that we're all done, we did this done.
Good job.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank you and all the Aldermen for helping us with whatever we come up with that we needed. We explained to you guys, you know, and y'all were more than willing to help us any way you could, and we appreciate y'all for being there for us, and hopefully we can keep it at a two. I'm not going to promise anything lower, but it's pretty hard to get a two, but we're going to keep striving though, every day. And if any of y'all have any questions about any of it, I'd be glad to try to answer them. As far as how much it's going to save you, you'll have to talk to someone like Mr. Brent Smith, the insurance people, but it will save you some money a little bit there, so. Anybody have any questions?
That is impressive.
Thank you, thank you. It really is, the guys worked hard for it, they really have, and my hat's off to them as well, because they, they put the time in for it, for sure.
If I could say something, and I know he'll agree with me, you know, I insure people in Monroe, and I'm sure he does too, I mean, we're talking, we got pretty much same text class as Monroe. I mean, they have a lot more resources, bigger town, it's just amazing, and I applaud you, I applaud the whole town, your fire, everybody had something to do with.
Right, and it's definitely a team effort. It wasn't just the fire department, for sure. I mean, it was the citizens, and it was definitely the Board of Aldermen and women, and the mayor as well, so it's an accomplishment for everyone, for sure.
But you could stop there and quit cutting my commissions. But y'all did a tremendous job, thank y'all.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, too. Thank y'all.
Congratulations to all of our fire department, our firemen, and our EMTs and first responders. Good job, and also to all those other agencies that helped us achieve that. 911, also Concordia Fire Department, Mr. Nolan Coffin is something that's helping us on that. I'd like to thank all of those people who made all this possible. You are one community, I really appreciate it. Number seven on our agenda is presentation of organizational chart for Badaia Police Department, and that's going to be presented by Joey Merrill.
This is the same chart that we've been using for the last four years. When I first got elected in 2016, we went from approximately 50 officers down to what we have now, which is 34. We're structured, no, we're at 33 now, actually. We're structured at 36 to be at full strength. We've pretty much never been at full strength, but this is showing every position we have, and, you know, I'm trying to work with everybody, and if something that y'all see that you don't want, if you want to change, let me know. As you all know, we've just lost two more officers due to reasons beyond my control, so we fixing to have to hire another person. And I want to, I want y'all's input, I want y'all to let me know what on that chart y'all want changed, and what y'all don't want. I want everybody to realize we have four shifts, meaning we work 24/7, seven days a week, so we had to do that with four shifts, four dispatchers. We also have four schools. We thrive to have an officer at each school. Also, you got to keep in mind, we have the use it or lose it. We have people getting sick, and we're like the fire department, if somebody takes off, we have to replace them. We can't just let them take off and have an empty spot. We have to replace that person. So, you know, and at a later date, I would like for everybody to maybe look into, and I know the chief's on board with me on this, the fire chief, to, for the police department and fire department to do away with the use or lose, and maybe pay out that money at the end of each year. It would, it would not only help us out on the scheduling, it would also save the town money. When somebody takes off, we have to replace, we have to pay that officer, the, his regular pay, then also we got to bring another officer in at time and a half. So, and us, our two departments are the only two departments that's like that, and Chief, you want to say anything on that, on how it affects your department?
Yeah, it affects it tremendously. I mean, if we have one guy off and two guys off, we've got enough guys that are there that, we've got to have at least two guys be off at a time, so that everybody can get their time off throughout the year before they lose it. And if we let two off, we've got to have two more to replace them, and they're going to be making time and a half pay, which is normal, because the police department, they get, what, 84 hours, anything over 84 hours in a two week period is time and a half. Our guys, anything over 106 hours, they've got to work 106 hours in two weeks before any of that's considered overtime. But with us not having to use or lose it, if some of the guys don't want to take off, and at the end of the year they have two or three shifts left of vacation, they can just, you know, the city can just buy that back from them, that's regular pay, instead of one man being off and getting paid regular pay, and another man coming in and working for him, getting paid time and a half pay. So, you're sleeping time and a half pay for every day that you buy it back from them.
Let me make a comment, but we talked this four years ago, right Johnny? We went there, right? We went there, approved by the mayor, to go there, to not staff, but to pay the overtime, correct?
We did.
We did, right?
Right.
And what has it done to your employees? Have they, they fussed during, they fussed during hunting season, but the rest of the time they don't have a second job, correct? It makes them not have to have a second job.
It didn't change any of that at all with that, you see what I'm saying?
Right.
Everybody has to be replaced if somebody takes off.
But they do make the overtime. It helps them on their, on their monies that they don't have to, because I hear them, I've talked, you know, when we discussed that four years ago, about whether it was going to be good or bad, the employees.
You get to a point where you get closer to the end of the year, even if it's not hunting season, because we have some guys that don't own or anything, and they're like, well, I got to use it right now.
Right.
And it is falling right where hunting season is falling in there, and the guys that are already scared to take off.
But there's some that don't hunt that love it, because they make real good money, correct?
Right.
So, you've been doing it for almost four years now, right? Three years?
What's that?
The overtime, when we didn't replace, and we went, you know, when we discussed it.
Right. Now, this is totally different from what he's talking about. I mean, we're working it like that, where instead of having eight guys on a shift, we've got seven guys on a shift.
Right.
To where if one man did take off, somebody had to work for it.
Right.
You know, we figured all of this up to where that was going to be cheaper to do it that way than it would be to hire three more people, one for each shift, having five guys on a shift, and saving the town all the benefits for those three guys throughout the whole year, plus their vacation as well.
Right.
But this right here is the use it or lose it on your vacation, if you don't use it, you lose it.
But you can't, I don't see how we could do that to your department and not do it to the other departments. That wouldn't be, to me, it wouldn't be correct to do that, myself. I wouldn't think we should.
We're the only two that you have to replace somebody that takes off.
Well, I don't know if that's always true. I'm sure there's people that get down to the end of the year, Lee, that you have that have to be replaced also, correct? I've heard them talk about it.
All of our job has to be managed.
Yeah, so they don't have, they got the same situation. It's just part of what use it or lose it, use it or lose it does.
It would help us out, I know, and I just threw that in there, just.
It'll help you, but it also is part of what happens when you take this policy and take it as a use it or lose it policy, but you can't, I don't see us doing one department, two departments, or three, but yet the other ones don't. I mean, that's not going to sit well.
In Lee's situation like that, if you have five guys take off in one week, Lee, do you have somebody that comes in and works in their spot, or just the guys that are there just picks up the pace with it?
The man's jobs that we have in our department have to be replaced, and that's the trash crew, the garden crew, the trash crew. Having somebody on our grass cutting crew, you know, we could probably do without him for a week, but we noticed it, but, I mean, we're not exactly staff like y'all are.
We have to replace somebody.
It's just like the others do, like on holidays, for instance, any holiday, 24/7, fire department and the police department.
It's like Monday.
And everybody else is off, you see what I'm saying? I mean, and it gets.
But I know, but have we made it for four years with it? Have you been able to do it like you're doing it, is what I'm saying?
The reason.
That's what I'm asking.
And I'm just telling y'all this just to think about, I just wanted.
Well, that's not us, that's policy, that'd be the mayor's.
I just wanted to throw it in there, because it makes it hard on those schedules, especially when we're shorthanded. If we're already shorthanded and we have somebody take off, I mean, we're even more shorthanded.
Well, that'd be the mayor to make that decision, you know, whether he's going to use it or lose it, or not have use or lose it. That's his call. That's not.
Just think about it, so all I'm, all I'm asking is think about how we can make that better.
Okay.
And, you know, this day and time, more than anything, we need our protection. As far as the chart goes, we have, you know, I've heard some, some issues about the investigation, and I want to clear that up. We have one investigator for juvenile and domestic violence. She has, she goes through special training and is involved dealing with that. We also have a Walmart here, which is a theft pretty much every day. I have an officer, I have an investigator assigned to Walmart, because each theft, they have to physically go down there, take the, take the, the video, and it takes up pretty much a whole day. So, I've got one just assigned to Walmart, and that leaves two for everything else that goes on in the town. And I got, I got an officer in here with me right now, Mr. Walter, he's a building checker. His, his normal job is go around at nighttime, checking, physically checking each building, see if it's locked, looking in, make sure nobody's breaking in. We get calls all the time from businesses that leave their doors open, alarms going off, or what have you, and that's the man that checks it. And Walter, don't tell them where you're working at right now, but we're shorthanded.
Right now, I'm working shift, because we don't have anybody working at night building, because I am working shift right now. Nobody got sick, and I have to, have to be replaced by them.
All right. We, we, actually, nobody got sick, we got people that quit.
Quit, yeah, we are coming to meet.
We had, like I said, we had one move out of town. I know Gardner said, last meeting, why is the high turnover? I, I can't answer that. I mean, we had one officer pass away, we had another officer that got, that we dismissed. Just had an officer retire and moved out of state, and we got another officer that family owns a roofing company, so you know where he's at right now. So, I mean, you have issues that come up. It ain't the, it ain't the department. We got a great department, but you have, the money we make, which is not very much, when something else comes along, they, they take it. So, if it's any jobs up there that you not, that you want to change, that you don't want, that you want to do away with, I mean, this is what I want to know. We fixing to have to hire somebody, and I don't want to go through the same thing we went through last time I had to hire somebody.
In reference to my statement that I made, as far as officers are concerned, yes, I did say that when I walked the district, that citizens complained saying that patrol did not, they only parked and did not ride the neighborhoods. That was one of the concerns that I got as I walked and campaigned. Also, as far as micromanaging, as far as like taking positions and putting one position together, if somebody doesn't have that many responsibilities, should alleviate and help on the excess of an officer when they quit as well.
We don't have a single position up there that I, that I think that is not doing nothing. I mean, they, I'm the chief, and I'm, I was hired by the public to make sure that I run that department right. Do you, do you even know how many officers that we had whenever you asked that question last week?
You just said 33.
Yeah. I told you that now.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure you didn't know that then.
But as Alderman Probst said, attrition, attrition, if we could save the city money.
That's what I'm asking, what number do y'all want me to attrition down to? By doing that, I've got to alleviate some of these jobs. We got public in here right now, that'll probably tell you, they see us riding around, they see us working. I, I mean, I don't know about what constituents you're talking about, but we have public in here, and I'm sure you could ask, make everybody in here on what we do. What number?
I don't have, I don't have a personal, I don't have a set number, because that's your department, but if you can take people and put them, if you could take a position and combine it.
Okay. I have. I went from almost 50 people down to 33. I've done that. That's what I'm saying. What number do y'all want me at? Because now I'm at the point, I've got to start alleviating services. Do y'all want to build?
You got your officers the last time, didn't you? You got your votes, you got your officers, so you didn't lose them.
Y'all didn't load on it?
Well, we just, we just two votes. You got three votes, make you get your officer.
You got three for sure votes.
You got three votes, and you got your officer. You got three votes, and you got your officer, you got your officer, Joey, so why are you trying to tell us that we need to vote yes?
Okay, order, order, hey, let's, get that guy's order, let's, uh, let's.
Well, you'll probably get your three votes again.
He will, he will, he'll get them.
But I, I'm.
Hold on, Joey, hold on, hold on, I'm sorry, I can't sit here and listen to you. If y'all don't watch the TV or the news, do you see what happens towns when they don't have enough officers? It ain't going very good, and to sit there and just chastise Joey.
We're not chastising Mr. Smith, we're not chastising, we're making our points just like we feel like we need to make, and we didn't chastise anything, I said he got his votes, he got his officers, so they got voted in.
But why can't you support, and you act like you're not gonna vote for Barbara Gardens?
How do you know how I'm gonna vote?
You just said so.
You, I did not say that, I said, I didn't vote for that last, I didn't vote for that officer last time, I did not vote for that one officer last time.
And first and foremost, I don't, personally, I don't think we have any rioting or protesting
going on in the city of Bada, I think that.
We got, we got a good leader right there.
Okay, if that's what you, if that's how you feel, then that's how you feel, but we are all entitled to our own personal opinions, we individually have our own individual opinions, that's why we all sit up here.
Okay, I wanna stop right there for that.
And my vote is not your vote, and your vote is not mine, so I'm entitled to vote the perspective of the way that I feel and choose to vote, regardless if you agree with it or you don't agree with it.
Hey, order, order, hey, listen, listen, order, order, listen, I can't, there's three people talking, we can't do this now, let's don't do that, let's don't put this out there, let's one at a time talk. Now, now, Joey, you wanna wrap up, I know you want to present this, are you asking for any, uh, action items tonight?
I'm not asking for any.
I think you, I think you've given us a flow chart of what you wanna see the department run at, I think what we need to do is let you know with Alderman here the next month or so to see what their ideas are, if they want to cut back a number here or there, and then we'll come back next month, and we'll, we'll hash this out, but let's don't get into this kind of thing right here, okay? Uh, I think you, I think you put together a great, uh, organizational chart, I think it's something that don't require action tonight, so, uh, I'm gonna ask if we can, if this next month, uh, let's work together, uh, Alderman, get with Joey and give him your ideas personally on what you think you would like to see them do with this department, I don't think that's asking too much, so let's do that, and we're gonna move on with our meeting, Joey, thank you very much for that.
Thank y'all.
And I'm gonna move, and I'm gonna move on with our meeting. Number eight on our agenda is update on the status of operations at the Riverbend landfill, uh, this is an informational piece, I'm gonna let, uh, uh, our clerk Jay, LaShawn, talk to it a little bit, but we know we had the, uh, the landfill fire, which DEQ come in and shut down, uh, the Riverbend Environmental, which was the company operating it, they henceforth filed bankruptcy, and however, we have a contract that's still good for three more years, and the company is gonna buy them out, I'm gonna let Alderman, I mean, uh, Mr. LaShawn explain to y'all where we're at on that, and how much we're paying now to take this, uh, to just be able to get rid of the trash, we're having to pay forty-four dollars a ton, and, uh, uh, that's, that's gonna be an extra expense on our, our budget that we wouldn't expect it, but this, this is for information, so Jay, you'll go ahead and do that.
Yes, sir, uh, thank you, Mayor, we, uh, Riverbend did file chapter eleven bankruptcy, uh, we turned it over to our bankruptcy attorney, uh, Ms. Matthew, Heather Matthews, there, our contract's in place, it's at a great rate, Lee can tell you, it's fifteen dollars a ton, and what Lee was, they forty-four dollars a ton, what we.
Forty-four dollars is the due price if they're charged.
So, our contract is safe, and, uh, Ms. Matthews told me today that the bankruptcy judge had approved the sale, and so that's in place, it's a company called Greenway Environmental, it is a, a third party, this isn't like some, the same company just changing names, so, uh, they'll be, she does not have a date yet, I don't know if Lee's had anything from the DEQ, it's up to the DEQ, I think, to, to allow Greenway to begin taking waste again, but she's saying hopefully you need a date.
We're waiting day by day for them to call the DEQ, call us, so let's, we'll get the process in, uh, the end, so, we, we would prefer to go to fifteen dollars and some change for a ton, other than forty-four dollars a ton, so, for the next.
So hopefully, uh, that'll be in place here shortly, and, and, so that fifteen dollars a ton will be good for, till September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, any questions, uh, about the landfill, this was for, for your information, uh, we'll keep you updated on that, was when we actually start back with the new company, uh, it will be an added expense to our, our, uh, our budget that we'll have to look at as we amend it later on over in the year. But anyway, if there's no questions, I'm gonna move on to a good part of our, our program and agenda, is number nine, is our board discussion and vote on determination and fixing of an amount of excess hydroelectric revenues to be distributed as rebates to the retail utility customers of the town of Bada. Do wanna say that, uh, if you'll look, I think they're gonna put on the screen there, this, uh, breakdown of how we come up with the calculation, uh, we've been following this since I've got in office, and we, it's been a, we followed it to the T. One of the things that, uh, that we're proud to do, this is the largest rebate ever paid, of course, our rebates, uh, have, is the increase in increases, so that's a good thing too, but you see our participation cost, including legal fees, was, uh, was eight million six hundred seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars, that is what it cost us to buy power, and our total royalties were thirteen million, nine hundred and three thousand. Before, we went, you know, the, the council, early on in our administration, uh, moved the debt requirement of the complex out of this fund, out of the hydro fund, so this is basically giving our people an additional, uh, it's a total of three hundred thousand dollars is that set a debt requirement, that is money that's going back to you, uh, since we have been in office, since we got in there, it's coming back to you in your rebate. There's no, our, our reserves are overst, uh, we have more money in our reserve required, so there's no additions or withdrawals, uh, the thirty-eight mils calculation is by ordinance, uh, the rebate amount, that was last year's rebate, uh, expenses related to the hydro fund or miscellaneous expenses, those are attorney's fees, dealing with, uh, uh, the, the thing that we did this year with that, so that leaves revenue to be split, two million five hundred sixty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars, uh, split in two leaves one million, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars to be rebated to our customers. Do I hear a motion, we accept that amount to be rebated to our customer?
I make that motion, Alderman Probst.
I second that motion, Alderman Smith.
Motion made by Alderman Probst, and second by Alderman Smith, I think?
Yeah.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
I make that motion, Alderman Gardner.
Motion made, motion made by Alderman Gardner, do I hear a second?
Probst second.
Alderman Probst second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
We stand adjourned, thank you very much.